Ready? Call a special media order, Village Code Police Carroll.
Rogers.
Here.
Myers. Texas. Washington. Williams.
Here.
Move to item number two. We have before us an ordinance amending the Village Code and section forty-two point eight for part-time police officers. There was some questions last week. Open up the floor, any questions?
Man, I think we tabled all of this last week. I don't think we had questions. I think it was all tabled due to the fact that the chief wasn't here to answer any questions.
Okay. Alright, so what's questions?
I have a question.
Alright.
And this is actually trustee Williams's question. And since he's not here, I'm asking for him. We just went through the ordinance review committee. And one of the things that, one of the things that he asked was, if you look on page number three, section C eleven, it says that the officers may be required to pass a psychological and/or physical examination, including a drug screening. His concern was to change the "may" to "must" to make it a requirement. I said that probably, that this language is probably pretty standard and it may be a cost issue or something that we don't necessarily need to have them do this because a lot of the part-time officers are, the part-time officer will be coming from other departments who've already had the training. But we discussed in the committee, the possibility of changing this to a, that they must show proof that they've had this done by a certain period of time. Ten years was discussed, five years was discussed, two years. But that was just maybe a suggestion that we changed this, that they must be able to show proof that they have in the past, in fact, have had psychological and/or physical examination testing. And that must be required.
Okay, so they must be able to show their proof that they've passed a psychological and a physical examination, including drug screening. Alright, has that changed? Alright, anything else?
Yes.
Trustee.
As ever, first question, and I ask this all the time, where and what are we getting this money for? We just hired two officers. And where are we getting the money for the part-time? What line item is it coming, coming out of?
Okay, as it was discussed during budget hearings, the five time, five part-time police officers were budgeted into this year's budget.
Did you say five?
So, yes, five.
I thought it was three.
It's five, what's that? Part-time police officers, five. Yep, and it was all budgeted into the line item.
Okay, again, I, I, how many hours? Or let's go back to, you said it was budgeted. We can always keep saying, is that coming out of the overtime? Because I asked about the money that we deleted, about a hundred and some thousand dollars from last year to this year. Is that what you're gonna use that money for? Because I looked at the budget from last fiscal year to this fiscal year, it's about the same. So where is the money for? I mean, we keep saying it's coming out. We can sit there and keep saying back and forth, it's coming out of such and such. I'm asking, the wages from last year to this year, if you look at it, are about the same. So where in that budget are we appropriating money? For now, I thought it was three. For five police officers, part-time, I don't know how many hours are they limited to? And is it coming out of the overtime? Because I was hearing a lot of times, he would do a budget hearing. That's why I wanted the chief here stating that if we hire part-time police officers, we can subtract money from the overtime. So is that where he plans on getting this money for? Because we just, like I said, we hired one with a cops grant. And we hired one to replace someone. But now we're hiring five officers. So my first question is, how many hours are they, are they guaranteed so many hours a month? Is it so many hours they can work in a year? And quite naturally, the last one, where beside wages are we pulling the money from?
Alright, the hours are, I think it's twenty per, twenty hours per week. It comes out to be, what, one thousand? One thousand forty per?
Per year.
Per year, one thousand forty.
We have one thousand forty hours, okay, twenty hours per week. Okay, that's how much, twenty thousand per person?
Twenty-four thousand.
Per person, that's a hundred thousand dollars. Where in the budget is that? I, I, that's why I'm asking, is that supposedly coming out of the hundred thousand dollars that we supposedly didn't put into the overtime?
It was two hundred thousand.
No, no, I'm talking about between. They budgeted for a hundred and six thousand this year. Last year, we spent three hundred. But we did budget for two hundred.
I think, because I remember the conversation, the discussion that you and I had during the budget. And it was, last year, we were looking at the, you were asking about the two hundred, I think it was two hundred and six thousand dollars difference. That was taken from the overtime that we had last year. And then there was a surplus of two hundred and six thousand dollars that was put into the actual full-time payment. And what, how it was explained at that time was, let's just say you have two hundred thousand dollars, okay? You have two hundred in the regular time limit and a hundred in overtime. And when you spent three hundred thousand last year, they took two hundred from overtime and put that, added that to the amount for regular time. So you still have to save a lot of money, it's just appropriated different. And I know that I, I'm sure you, I'm sure you remember who's saying, but I know I've said multiple times, the only way you can get rid of overtime is more bodies. Because if you have a sergeant, and you know that sergeants have first right refusal for overtime, you have a sergeant who roughly makes around thirty dollars, thirty dollars an hour, they get time to have, that's forty-five dollars an hour to do something. If they choose to give the overtime, because we want people on the streets, we have details, things like that, you can pay somebody forty-five dollars an hour to do it. Or you can pay somebody, I think I figured out, it's like twenty-three dollars an hour? Around that. So physically, which one makes more sense? Twenty-three dollars versus forty-five dollars? And I think that, you know, I've said in the past, part-time officers, I know the police department has not been a fan of part-time officers. I have been a fan of part-time officers, and I've said that in the past. But my concern is, is that we get people on the street the best and most fiscally responsible way possible. So if you put a person on the street for forty-five dollars for twenty-four hours, I mean, I, I think that that's something to look at.
I think, too, you're okay, adding additional police officers on the shift. Again, that's the department head's responsibility to how they bring them in. If he puts three of the part-time officers on one shift, the busiest shift, or he leaves it at two, leaves it at one. The, the key is making sure, number one, we have officers on the street. Number two, making sure our officers, making it safer for our officers. Currently, right now, you have one officer in a car. That officer pulls the one over, you appoint two, your second or your third police officer over from other beats. Okay? This allows to have a part-time officer with the police officer. He has his backup, he or she, they have their backup. So when you look at the part-time police officers, it not only makes the streets safer, it also makes it, makes our, our police officers are safer. Again, when we sat down with the budget, we looked at it. The, the part-time police officers, again, we've talked about being able to have people look and keep an eye on the prisoners. You can pay someone, our police officer, time and a half to watch a prisoner. Or if we have part-timers already sitting here working, we've got someone sitting there and be able to keep an eye on prisoners. So, you know, the police chief, it's his responsibility how he, you know, keeps his shifts going. But this is, again, another way to get those overtime numbers down. But also be able to put additional bodies on the street. I guess, again, additional safety for now, our residents, but also for our police officers.
Okay, now, I know you, trustee Williams and the mayor, my question still remains, last year's budget, we went over almost a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in overtime. Now, you're telling me by hiring these five, I thought it was three, police officers, it's going to take place of the overtime that we have? Because the overtime that we, that we budgeted for is only a hundred and six thousand dollars. So now you're telling me that the officers that you put in place are going to make up the difference of the overtime also? And I've said this many times, police officers do not, and I'll go on record, police officers do not stop crime. People do. Police officers are there to, after it's over, to mop it up. That's the only time they're called. They're not, because all they do is wait for them to leave the street, boom, it happens. I'm not saying that we shouldn't have more police officers. I'm saying I'm tired of each and every other month that we have to borrow from Peter to pay Paul just to pay payroll. If you're gonna talk about adding five people here, three people who were not on the payroll last fiscal year, to bring them here, and we've already had problems as far as paying payroll and paying bills that we need to pay. I, I do know that this is not gonna stop overtime. We thought it was gonna do something before, but it's not gonna stop overtime. That's my first question. My second question, what does the FOP think about, and we have, we took care of that problem? Because you better believe that they're gonna, and we said that. But that's something that we'll talk about in a later fashion, as far as what the FOP stands for. Because we, we'll talk about that when it comes to personnel. However, I still, I'm sorry, I don't see where we're gonna get this money from. I was under the understanding it was three. For five now, five part-time police officers to, because if they write a ticket and they're supposed to go to court the next day, if they're working somewhere else, who goes to court for them? Because if they're working during the day, if they work at night here and working during the day there. That was my first question. My second question, are we talking about hiring officers that are already police officers? Or are we talking about hiring people that we have to train? If we have to train, that's more money that we have to pay for. So that's gonna have to be taken care of. So I don't see anything in here that says already police officers. It says GED, test, psychological test, that part, okay. But it doesn't say, because if they're not a police officer, they have to be trained. We have to pay for that. Everyone gets a psych test whether you're a police officer or not, because you're coming here. But if they're not trained, that means we have to pay for their training. Who knows how many thousands of dollars that is per five people? So I'm just looking at, where, where are we getting this money from to, to pay for this? And that's why I asked the first question, is it coming?
Alright, let's go through your questions real quick.
Sure.
First of all, overtime last year, we knew that we had overtime last year because number one, we lost two police officers, which meant we had to fill those positions with officers working overtime. We also know that we had injuries, where officers were off the streets because of injuries. Again, to fill those positions took officers with overtime. And we also did some special details, so, which the board was, was aware of. And the board was aware of during the board meetings, and when those special details were happening. So those overtime, when you look at the overtime for those, again, I think currently, right now, we still have another officer off, right? So right now, we have another officer that's off. And that position right now is being filled with overtime. So when, when you look at, at that kind of stuff, last year's overtime, if we would not have been two out, two officers short, and those positions had to be filled with overtime, we probably would have been very, very close to the budget.
We hired two.
No, we just hired, we just hired them, that was under this year's budget.
Okay, this year, okay, so then...
So we went probably, what, six months last year without two police officers? Which all their, all their hours had to be filled with overtime.
Okay.
The other thing, too, is talk about the FOP. The FOP is not involved in this, because these are not union employees. These are part-time employees. And he also talked about part-time for police officers, or for part-time police officers, there's no overtime. Again, that's up to the chief to make sure that he directs, if, if he knows that they work twenty hours this week and he knows they have court the next week, he has to be able to arrange their hours so that their hours that they're working, maybe they're at court.
What if they have another job? What if they have another job? If their police officer at another municipality, they work during the day, and they have to come to court that day? How, how, who, who represents that, that ticket that's being written? I mean, if they're officers or they're working during the day?
And we talked about all that, and the chief feels very confident that he can handle the, the hours, keep the overtime down. And then the last thing about train or not, they, we are looking for trained police officers who are already working for other communities.
It's not in here.
So, but again, the chief knows, and that's what he's looking for, that there's a lot of officers out there that are trained.
But it's not, we're passing an ordinance to give a guy, that's what the ordinance is for.
It's a part-time police officer.
It's a part-time. But we're passing an ordinance to give a guy a life for hiring. And this ordinance has nothing to state that you have to, you should be a, already an officer somewhere else. There's nothing in here that says that. It says the basic, the rules. Now, are they gonna go through our police and fire commission when they get hired? Or are we just gonna hire, or is just the police chief is gonna hire himself? Does it have to go through the commission?
Uh, this one, I, no, I don't think it does.
So to be a police officer in the village, you don't have to come before the police and fire commission?
Not part-time, you don't have to, because it's less than forty hours per week.
And there's no liability requirements there? I mean, there's nothing in liability. You can, we can just get a person that we happen to like, see, or whatever the case may be. As long as they have standard credentials, pass the psych test, they could be a police, part-time police officer here in South Village. And there is nobody that's going to, amen, they're hiring, but the police chief.
I think it's just like any other department head we have, the department head hires the individuals. Public Works was hired by the...
But this is, don't you think the standards should be a little bit better, though? A little bit bigger? The standards for a person that's out there with a gun in front of a lot of people, don't you think the standards should be a little higher? To have that person out there, other than their site? Don't you think the police and fire commission should have something to say about that?
No, because they only, the police and fire commission is involved for forty hours of work. These are part-time police officers.
Okay, and then you talked about the officers that were all, I, I don't know, I'm sure every trustee up here that was here the last budget remembers that this budget that we have now, last year, we went over, and it was due to the fire, I'm sorry, the police department. The overtime went over almost two hundred thousand dollars. I don't see how we're going to say that by hiring seven people, two were from people that were already not here, like I said, one got hurt, another one left. Okay, we hired two. Part-time police officers, I, I, I don't see it. And then also qualifications in this ordinance shouldn't have some type of teeth besides being twenty-one, psych test, GED.
Alright, any other question? Trustee.
I have two questions and then a comment. So the police and fire commission, we talked about they're not being a part-time process. What about discipline? Because right now, officers are disciplined through the police and fire. Once they become a part-time, will they be disciplined through the police and fire? Or will it be through the chief?
Through the chief.
Okay, and then, do you have, I don't know if this would be proper documents to put this in, or if this is even thought about, but would there ever be a time where a part-time officer would be like the officer in charge of the shift? Is that something that's been thought about?
No, no.
Okay, so that would be something that I would, I would make sure that, not because they're inadequate or, you know, I'm sure that they'll be fine for jobs, but because we do have sergeant personnel, we do have seasoned personnel that know our streets, know our town. I think it's something that should definitely be thought about.
If you look at item B, it talks about doing the, part-time police officers shall not be assigned supervisor-direct full-time officers. And then again, it talks about the training, it talks about, if you look at item number B, it says, "Part-time police officers shall be trained in accordance with Illinois Police Training." It gives the act, the section, and the rules and requirements by the I O E T S B. So it's Illinois, something training standards board.
And then just my comment, we talked about overtime last year. And I'm gonna take the number three hundred thousand dollars. So if we spent three hundred thousand dollars overtime, okay? At the sergeant salary at forty dollars an hour, forty-five dollars an hour, that's six thousand, six hundred and sixty-six hours of overtime. I just took three hundred thousand dollars divided by forty-five, that's correct. Sixty-six, sixty-six, okay? So if we had that, if that was how many hours we had overtime, sixty-six, sixty-six, I put that at the price of twenty-four dollars an hour different, okay? Twenty-four dollars an hour for the part-time officer. I came up with a total of a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four, which is one hundred and forty thousand dollars and sixteen cents less than three hundred thousand dollars. So to answer your question of how the part-time officers can save overtime, if you've got six thousand, six hundred and sixty-six hours that need to be worked, and you're paying either forty-five dollars an hour, which would give you three hundred thousand dollars, or you're paying twenty-four dollars an hour, which would give you roughly a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, that's a hundred and twenty thousand dollar difference, just right there, because you're gonna pay overtime. Now, I agree with you, trustee, but it's not gonna pop all overtime. I don't, that's why there's still money in the overtime budget, because we know that there's gonna be overtime. But if the hour, the amount of hours that need to be worked don't change, and if we could get qualified and competent people to work those hours at a lesser rate, I think that's something that would get trimmed.
But trustee, you, you have to, I don't know, you maybe, you're forgetting the main thing. We went over two hundred thousand dollars in the police budget last year.
I don't think, you talked about one line item, they went two hundred thousand.
It was, if it was whatever line item, it came out of that budget. I don't care what line item it was, we were over two hundred thousand dollars for what we budgeted for the police department last fiscal year. Now, if we're gonna spend, if we, if we spent three hundred and some thousand, this year we spent a hundred and some thousand, you still went over. So we're already looking at an overage without overtime. We're looking at an overage without day one. And, and we all remember here, last year, we were over in October. So you still had November, December, January, February, March, and April. You still had six months to go. And we were already at our target rate for overtime at that time. So I'm just, I'm just asking, I'm, I'm asking, my question was, there's always gonna be finances, where, show me where this money's coming. We can all, we can sit there and say that it's money in the budget for this, money in the budget for that. It's money in the budget for whatever you want it to be at that time. If one of these trustees asks you for a dollar, we don't have the money, because it's not in the budget. But if we wanna, if you wanna do something and you wanna make money in the budget, all you do is speak it, say, we got money in the budget, let's go ahead and vote on it, we deal with it when it comes. I'm tired of dealing when it, when it happens. If I see a bomb coming, you think I'm gonna wait and see where it's gonna hit before I get out the way? So all I'm asking is, where can we, where are we getting this money from? I see where we got the money from, and I said that for the two hires. One was a, a grant, and the other one, the person, well, he left. Now, we're bringing five more in, I don't see the money. I don't see, we're hiring all these people with the same amount or less than we had last year. We have, we're getting in less tax money than we did last year. We're getting in less tax money, reason being, we have less residents, less people paying taxes. It's time for us to be more fiscally responsible and say, okay, hold on, let's wait a minute. Let's wait a minute, let's, let's see how at least six months fare out, and how we're doing six months. Then we can go and hire, what's the rush to hire today? Because crime is not gonna stop because you flood the streets with police officers.
I think, again, we, we go back to, we talked about, we went almost six months last year without two police officers, which meant officers had to work overtime. So you talked about the last six months, we saw overtime go up, you're correct. Because the last six months, we were without two police officers, and it took officers to work overtime to fill those positions. Now, the other thing, too, is if you look at the budget, we were already almost two months into the budget. So we've got two months already into the budget where we don't have these officers hired yet. Again, we still have a hiring time that's gonna take the chief to get someone hired. So, you know, with the money being budgeted already this year, four or five police officers started from when the budget was passed, we're already almost two months, I think, into the budget already. And we haven't spent a dime for those part-time police officers. So, you know, when you look at the money, and again, it probably, again, I'm not gonna, I can estimate, you're probably looking at another month or two before the chief can get applications out there, have people start coming in, get into the process, getting people. We could be probably almost four to five months into this, this budget year. Now, the important thing, too, is remember that, you know, we've got, or we're in the middle of getting ready into our hottest months, where we know we're having the most problems. You know, getting someone in here, getting them trained, you know, especially over winter months, and make sure that we're ready for next spring, and, and as we move forward into there. So, again, all the amount for the entire year for five part-time police officers were included into the line item for, for this budget. But we're already into, what, two months, almost two months into this budget? We don't have one, one of them hired yet.
Where's the training money coming from, man?
Trustee Jones, or any people who are already trained, trustee Jones.
Is this strictly for cost savings? That's, that's the first question. Or are we serious about getting control of the crime in our community? If we're serious about getting control of the crime in the community, flooding the streets with officers is not gonna answer the question. It's just, it's just not gonna take care of the problem that we have. We have a disconnect in this community, and that disconnect needs to be rectified. By hiring more police officers from elsewhere, from who knows where they're coming from, it's not gonna bring any connect in with the residents of the village. You have to create programs, you have to create more thoughts that's going to bring the police in the community together. You, you, you just can't stick a cop on the street. We, we've seen, too many of the residents have seen bad things. They have a different thought process about some of the police officers. We know we have some good police officers. What we need to do is show that we have good police officers. If we're gonna put money anywhere, we should put money into bringing the community together with the police officers. That's, that's one thing.
Rude. Just rude. That's just some word with respect.
I, I asked the finance director, I knew this number wasn't correct, but while we did go over overtime on the police department, let's make sure we're very clear. The police department last year was budgeted three point two million dollars. That was what the original amount was. Last year, the police department, under their budget line item, only spent two point nine. So those are the actual numbers. So when you look at one line item that they're over in overtime, this, this whole entire board knew they were gonna be over, because we talked about officers, we had positions that were not filled, we talked about there's officers that were off on medical. So the overall budget for the police department was under last year what was budgeted, except for one line item. And even with that one line item being over, it was still in. So, just wanna make sure, make the, I, because I knew, I just wanna make sure, I don't know if the, the audience was catching that, but from what I was hearing, the trustees said it sounded like the whole entire department was over by, you know, two hundred and twelve dollars. Alright, any other questions? Trustee Myers.
Under C twelve, it says, "Must complete four hundred hours of certified training prescribed by the Illinois law enforcement. The standard board are eligible to receive a waiver of such training." It does not mention prior, coming on board, or during the time of coming on board. It just says, "Must complete four hundred hours." We need something in there to say that they must have this training before they come on board. And now it's a wide-open statement, "Must complete four hundred hours of certified training." That doesn't mean that we're raising our hand, you're sworn in, you're a cop now, don't play cop. Then later on, you can get your four hundred dollars. We, we're gonna be paying out dirt good money, but send these guys to get that training. And these officers, when they come on board, they must show proof that they have this certification that they get when they finish the four hundred some hours. I know I had, had to show proof, and I don't think any, ever as an officer of part-time. Officers, I know that as part-time in other towns, they had to show proof that they received a certified training. But that, item C twelve doesn't state that.
So... So we change it to, "Must have completed four hundred hours of certified training as previous ties prescribed by the state law enforcement and standards board are eligible to receive a waiver of such training." So it says they, they must have. Take out the, right there says, "Must have completed." So that means before they're hired, they must have it completed. Trustee Myers. I know, I got the changes right here. So so far, we've got two changes. On there, eleven, it says, "Must show proof that they have passed a psychological and physical exam, including a drug screening." And twelve says, "Must have completed four hundred hours of certified training prescribed by the state law enforcement and standard board are eligible to receive such waiver." Trustee Myers.
And I know that trustee Jones didn't finish his whole comment, but what I was thinking, when I was getting the gist of it, was you were talking about building community relations between our current police department and our residents. Well, to speak to that, I think if you have more officers available on the street, then you will have more officers available to participate in community events. I know that there have been many times, speaking for public relations committee, where we've wanted or requested officers to be a part of certain things, i.e. to the government day. We have officers that participate by helping us chaperone, helping us drive the kids around, and that is seen as a chance for overtime. They have to sign up for that if they wanna do it, and that's part, they get overtime for that, because we can't take away the three or four officers that were just taken to the government day. We can't take those officers off the street. to the government day, we can't take those officers off the street to chaperone a bunch of kids around all day. Officers off the street. So, that's an opportunity for overtime. So, if you got four officers getting overtime for doing that, if you had more part-time officers, that would be an opportunity to not have to, maybe not have to pay overtime, where you could put people, the part-time officers on the street, and put the seasoned officers to the government day, or vice versa, or whatever. But more programs like that, something Carson Rice wanted to do, something that community outreach partnership committee wanted to do. We would have officers, neighborhood watch. We would have officers potentially available to participate, where even if it were overtime, we would still have bodies able to do that. Because right now, even if we had, even if we approved the overtime, we might not have the staff, say, we already got one officer still out, we're just, we're just got the cop, the cop, grant person kind of coming, trying to run their way in. You've got newer officers where we don't even have the staff right now to be able to participate in that. And I agree with you. You know, this is not even a problem. We had many people say that their relationship with the police department and South Village has not looked great. It's a federal issue, it's not just with South Village. And I think if we had the opportunities to have more programs like that, it would be a good idea. But again, this would be something that could potentially help that. And I think that that is something that needs to be looked at in the police department. And if other departments, I don't know whether necessarily how they would help, maybe the other communities besides, like Carson Rice, Neighborhood Watch, and Public Order, Public Relations, but it's something to think about. I think it's, I think it's a good point that you brought up. But again, I think that part-time officers would be able to assist in that.
And the other thing to make sure we point out is under, um, item B, that, especially that last sentence, talking about the part-time officers shall be trained in accordance, uh, these officers will be already trained through the Illinois law enforcement and training board. So, they'll already have their, uh, psychological test, they've already, they would have already passed it. Item, item B, it says, "Part-time officers shall be trained in accordance with the Illinois Police Training Act," gives you the act right there, "and the rules and requirements of the, uh, ILES, um, ETSB." So...
Are they gonna be trained by us there?
Yeah, it's, what's that?
Are they gonna be trained by, prior to coming, or are we gonna train them?
No, we're not gonna be paid for training, we're looking for certified officers, which it says right there under item B. So, you, you were looking for certified officers that have already been trained and have already passed. So, and again, you know, I think that, you know, a lot, we've heard a lot of discussion about, about the overtime, again, the key is to reduce the overtime, but it's also the key is for more safety. Um, be able to have the police officers, and we talked about the safety for our residents, but we also talked about the safety for our police officers.
So, you're saying, "Part-time officers," instead of say, instead of it saying, "Shall be," you wanna change that to "must be?"
Shall is the, shall and will. Um, let's see, I don't see if this mixed up. Shall, will, should, could.
Depending on the meeting, the word is.
I'm asking, are you changing the?
I got, okay, we'll change it, must. Yeah. I was just trying to think how it was worded. So, "Part-time officers must be trained." Okay? So, that's the third change we've got here, uh, in item B. Must be trained in accordance with the Illinois Police, uh, Training Act, has the act and the rules and requirements of the Illinois TSB.
Mr. Mayor, I still have a problem. When we hire a police officer here in the village, because a part-time's gonna have just about as much jurisdiction as a full-time police officer, especially if he's out there working by himself with someone else, he still has to make that decision first. And so, he's has, he, he's gotta be able to make that decision, whether, what to do or what not to do. If that's the case, then I don't see why just one person can make that decision whether we should or should not hire that person. Just leave it up to one person. I don't care if he is the police chief. It should be a committee, because if, if he, if he makes a mistake, it's gonna come back on this village. It's not gonna come back on the chief. We, as trustees, and also as mayor, are gonna have to take the brunt of anything that happens while we have an employee that went out there and made a mistake. Right now, you have a board, you have a police and fire commission board, but to put a person out there on the street, and you said, "We're gonna supersede the police and fire commission," and just have one person distinguish whether we should or should not fire, I, I, I'm not in agreeance with that. I just don't see that. Because this person does have someone's life and death, or their life in their hands at that time, they have to make that decision. So, it, it's more than just putting police officers on the street. We can line the street up with all kind of people, or what type of people are you gonna line them up with? Who's gonna look at that background? Who's gonna say, "Well, we should do this?" Okay, we have one person? And then they don't present this person to the board or nothing? I know we don't do it now for our police, but we have a commission that does do it for, when we hire police officers. I don't know why we're changing it to one person to be responsible for hiring this person.
All right. And again, like I said earlier, in fact, it's in item number B, I'm sorry, item A, says, "Part-time officers," or officers that work less than 40 hours per week are not appointed by a police and fire commission. So...
But that's something you put in.
Police and fire commission is for, uh, police officers that are hired for 40 hours or more.
But, okay, you've made, someone made this employment a, a requirement. This wasn't just, I don't think you got it from anywhere, this is something that was put in there for us to vote on. It's not something that's written in stone, um, is it, or is it taken from a book or something that says, "This is what you should do when you hire police officers part-time?" I, I, I'm just asking, because you, we're making up this ordinance. This ordinance is being made up, and we're amending an ordinance that was in place. So, was this in place at the time of the ordinance for part-time police officers? Because I've never seen an ordinance for a part-time police officer in, in the village, since I've been trustee. I've never seen an ordinance for part-time police officers. So, we're amending, I guess, section 48, I'm sorry, 42, uh, to 42, and, uh, part 28. So, I guess there must be an ordinance that says police are, are part-time police officers. I'd like to see that one.
South Village used to have part-time police officers, auxiliary police officers?
I used to be 20.
They used to.
I used to be 20, I mean, but things are different.
Has happened, the state statutes and things have changed, so there's things that have to be changed and amended.
Okay. So, can we see whatever this South Village has in place for part-time police officers? If we're amending something, we're amending something that's already in place. That's what you, that's what it is, amending a order or a, a, an ordinance that's in place, and we're amending to put this in there. That's what amended means. So, I never saw, and I, I haven't seen, an ordinance that has or states that we have an ordinance for pa- part-time police officers.
All right. Any other questions? Go ahead, Steve takes.
Mr. Mayor, clarification on, uh, trustee Burgess. Uh, that ordinance, I don't, uh, I don't think it says part-time, I think it says auxiliary police officer. Uh, that's the reason they're going to this one here, because this one there spells out part-time, state Illinois does not recognize auxiliary police officers anymore. So, this one is the one that is going to be on place to replace that one. We did have one of the books, and I can have, produce you a copy real quick if you need it. But it says auxiliary, sir.
Okay, so, then it should've said, "Amending the auxiliary ordinance that was put in place X amount of time." We're amending that, and we're putting this in place. That's what it should say. If it was an ordinance for auxiliary officers, okay, fine. Put that in there, then we can look and see exactly what we had versus what we're trying to amend.
So, again, if we read the titles, it says, "An ordinance amending the village code to add," says it right in the title, "section 42, part 28, part-time police officers." All right? So, trustee takes.
This has been an enlightening conversation. I, I, I think this whole agenda, this whole agenda in title is illegal. And I'm saying that because when we had a committee meeting where the mayor and the police chief were absent from, we were asked to table, "What do you see on the current agenda as two, three, four?" We were told to table that until they can be present for the next committee meeting for discussion. Now, we have a special meeting where you're being asked to not only discuss the three items, but later to approve them, the same evening. If this had been said at the committee meeting, that we're gonna table this, and we're going to approve it at the next board meeting, the reaction may have been different. This is the type of thing where we lose confidence from every resident, I take that back, some of the residents in South Village who care about what we're doing as board members. Now, those that don't care, you could do anything you wanna do. But if we tell them, "We're gonna table something for discussion when the mayor and the police chief are available," then that's what we should do. Stick to what we say we're going to do, and not just change horses midstream. And that's exactly what's happening tonight. You have a special meeting, talking about approving something, discussing something which you never said you would do. Now, if the board doesn't care, and the mayor doesn't care, then continue to do what you're doing right now. I think you should adjourn this meeting, and wait until the next committee meeting, and do what you said you were going to do. Discuss it with the mayor, if he's available, the police chief, if he's available, discuss it with them at that time, and not for this fiasco that you're doing tonight. Thank you.
Trustee, any other questions?
Question.
Josh, trustee Wade, I'm Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanna know, past practice, the previous police chief that we had, did they hire, on their, only did they go before the police and fire commission?
On full-time, full-time police officers go before the police and fire commission. Part-time police officers are hired just like with the department, just like every other department.
And that's the way, that's the way that they've always, we've never had.
We've never had a part-time, because this is adding this section.
Okay.
We had, we had auxiliary's at one time, which were part-time police officers, but the state of Illinois does not recognize auxiliary police officers anymore.
You have to change the term.
So, that's why we're adding this section for part-time.
They have had part-time police officers, I don't care what you call them, we've never changed part-time police officers. Auxiliary is auxiliary. If they change, if this right here should state that it was changed from auxiliary to part-time police officers.
It's not changing, it's not changing auxiliary, this is adding section for part-time police officers, just like the title says. Add. All right? Any other questions?
Just one thing, uh, could you ask everyone to use their mics? Uh, we do have people in the audience who have hearing impaired. So, we should all try to use our mics so they can hear the full conversation that we're having. I'm sorry.
Any other questions? All right? Move to item number three. This is for the ordinance amending section 7412, 192, the village code of South Village. This is for the, uh, under traffic vehicles. This is for the impoundment of vehicles. Yes, there are some open questions on this one, so trustee, what answers?
Um, I have a few questions. Page number three, section two, I'm sorry, section one. We talk about the administrative fee of not less than $500 that may be a, um, an offense to, for having your vehicle seized. My question is, number one, how will this, how will the officers be aware of this, um, be aware that there's an actual administrative fee of more than $500 when they're on the streets? And then my question number two is, about the fee, so, I'm gonna throw a number out here, because it has to be more than $500. If the fee is $700, okay? And then there's the tow fee. So, I understand the tow fee would go to the tow fund. The administrative fee, would that go to the tow fund, or would that go to the general fund? And would it have to be paid prior to the release of the vehicle?
I, I can, I can, first of all, the officer's not gonna go after the fees, but it ends up happening when someone comes in and shows out a toll release fee, or a toll release form, that will have on there what they'll have to pay. So, those fees and stuff will have to be paid before the cars are released. The, the second question...
Where the money was going, the, the administrative fee. There's an administrative fee, and that's the reason for the car being seized?
The tow fee goes to the police department, the administrative fee goes to the general fund.
Okay. So, maybe I'm reading this incorrectly, but what I'm, what I'm seeing is, I didn't cut my grass, I, in excess of $700, I'm, I'm gonna keep with the number 700, I have $700 worth of fines. If that's the case, they can tow my car.
No. Where do you see that at?
I'm, I'm reading what this says, and I'm asking a question, because that's what's...
Show, show me.
Oh, I, I'm asking the question, because this is what's been through the strats here.
Show me where it's saying.
I'm asking, I'm asking, because what I'm, based on what I'm reading here, and based on what's in the world, I'm asking a question so I can get an answer. So, if I have an administrative fee, which would be like a ticket, which would be that I didn't cut my grass, in excess of $500, so if I didn't cut my grass, and I have a $700 ticket, can an officer tow my car because of that? Questions, yes or no?
Go ahead.
All the fees associated with the impoundment of vehicle has to involve the vehicle itself, not other, you know, like tickets or anything else. Has to be like the vehicle that stopped for some reason, is impounded for a reason, and administrative fee can be added.
And I think we're on the one ordinance. I think your question might be coming in our next ordinance. This one here is about the, the impoundment of vehicles violations. This is for the funds and stuff coming from those violations. Talks about the collection of the monies deposited into the police department tow fund. All money collected by the village pursuant to section should be deposited in South Village Police Department tow fund for the use and purposes of said funding, including, but not limited to overtime. Yeah, it spells out what they can spend it on.
You're right, I love the other one.
Okay, so, the money collected through tow fund, tow fund is limited to, uh, but not limited to overtime paid for special unit deployments by the village police department, tools, equipment, use for department narcotics, and gang units, and miscellaneous expenses of the department. The, uh, chief of, uh, the department shall prepare an accounting of all department expenditures and funds collected pursuant to the section upon request of the village corporate authorities, and upon request of the authorized village officials. This goes back to, during budget talks, that the village boards said they wanted to make sure that we had a separate account.
Yeah, we're on number three, so I will write ordinance.
Am I on one?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's a shame.
Okay.
Yeah.
I apologize, I was on the wrong one.
So, okay, number one. And now, the question was, should there be a situation where I have a violation, I violated an ordinance, I'm gonna take a grass cutting, in excess of $500, which is what this brings, and I'm gonna take $700? I have $700 worth of tickets for not cutting my grass. Can the officer tow my car because of it? That, that's what is him, the world of Facebook, and that's what was discussed at the ordinance committee. So, my, and my question is, per this section, is that true? Yes or no?
You wanna answer?
Sure, go ahead.
The answer is the same. Any could be associated with impoundment, has to involve the vehicle. It has to involve the vehicle. In other words, the vehicle has to be moved, and they talk to it for some reason, they decide that you're gonna tow it, and they can tow it, or if they're violating some violations, why? It has to be a vehicle. Nothing else is associated with it.
So, just to be clear, it has to involve the vehicle, because I ran a red light, I'm playing music too loud, I have...
I thought we talked about intoxication, talked about drugs.
Right. My car, blah, 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 which is already part of the ordinance that we already had before, which is made this current ordinance. It is not, because I violated a village ordinance that the officer can tow my car.
There has been a moving, I think it's called a moving violation.
That's what I thought, but I thought maybe I was re-listened correctly, so I was wanting to make an education.
No, that's, that's why I said, "Show me," because I, I've read through this, I didn't see anything.
I mean, I read it, I was getting clarification, because that's not what I saw in my, my web earlier today, and I just wanted to make sure, because I know another trustee approached me and said that they have received eight or nine phone calls from residents stating, "If I don't cut my grass, or I don't pay my water bill, then they're gonna tow my car." And my question to that was, how would the officer even know that?
And, and every point here talks about the operation, use of your own vehicle, or driving under the influence. Operation number three is operation, number four is the operation, use of vehicle, five, same thing. Six talks about driving, uh, with a license or without a driver's license permit, uh, again, you'd have to pull it over for a moving violation, operation of a, use of a motor vehicle, not eight is operation or use of vehicle, nine is operation, 10 is operation, 11 is operation, 12 is operation. So, this whole entire, um, ordinance deals with towing because of a moving violation So this whole entire ordinance deals with towing because of a moving violation while someone's operating a motor vehicle.
Okay, so the administrative fee that we put on water bills, it would be a fee that we could add to the already, the fee that's already put on there for the tow fund, or is it additional, or is it what currently would be the tow fund fee now?
I think the administration fee is the toll fund fee. That's what they're saying, because, because the way it's worded is it's still the toll fund, but it's, it's under administration fund fee. And it goes to the towing fund, which is the next ordinance, which I was wrong, sorry. Trustee, trustee Burgess.
What is the administration fee, how much?
Not less than $500.
I came to a storm by less than, I have to have an exact amount. What is the administration fee for this particular ordinance? It says not less than, that's $499. So I'm just asking, what is the administration fee, so the people can see?
I think most of our ordinances, so it says not less than $500, so you're looking at $500 fine or a fee.
Who makes that decision?
But also, it's part of the ordinance.
No, mayor, who makes the decision? What, if it's spelled out, then they already know when they come that the administration fee is $50, $100, $200. Who makes the decision of not less than $500? When they get up here to pay that ticket and you got administration fee, and they have the money for the ticket, which may be $300, $400, and then the administration fee be not less than, who makes that decision? How much the administration fee is?
It's not less than $500, so again, when you have someone, maybe go before the, the judge or you know what? The, when you go before a judge or report a judicator, our ordinance says not less than $500. So you can't have a judicator or a judge who often say, oh, I'm going to charge you $25. Plus, I think most of our ordinances say it's up to $750, if I remember right. Again, this, a lot of people on this board...
But that's not a definitive answer, mayor. You can, you don't go pay your bills, when you come up here to pay your water bill that says not less than $300. There's nothing that says that. They give you a definitive bill and say, this is what you owe. But when you tell someone not less than $500, they say, I got $100. You say, well, we need 300 more, 400. Oh, okay, 400 more. Then why don't you, why don't you put on there what it is, rather than to leave it to whoever is collecting money at the window to tell the person? But it depends on how they talk to the, to the, to the person at the front desk. If they're belligerent, it's more, if they're nice, it's less, or whatever, have, whatever reason it may be. Why can't it be, everything else is spelled out? Why can't the administration fee be a definite fee? Because everything, you're right, it says not less than $500. There's not less than, what is not less? I mean, who makes that decision? You're not going to be, does Mr. Ferrin make that decision? Who makes that decision when they pay that bill? How much that administration fee is going to be?
It's 500.
But you're saying it's less than 500?
No, it says not less than 500.
Then why don't you put on there $499 and 99 cents?
Because that's less than 500.
I said, why? So, so you're saying that other fee would be $500. Then why don't we say the fee would be $500? Why would we say that? Not less than $500 doesn't tell me, that means it's going to be 500 plus. Plus what and for what reason? I'm sure when you pay, and you, and you pay a late charge on whatever, you pay a late charge, and there's an administration fee in there, they tell you how much it is. They tell you what the penalty is in, in your water bill. They tell you what your penalty is if you don't pay by a certain date. They don't say less, it's going to be less, it's not going to be not less than $300. It should be on here. It should tell the person that's paying that it's going to be $500, period. But this, this is a salesman tactic. You can buy a car for $399.99, and that makes it sound like it's so, so much cheaper than 400. So I'm just asking, why don't we put something in here that says, instead of not less than, that's, I'm sorry, that, that, that's 500, that's what it is? Is that what you want to put on there?
So every word's underlying not less than, that gets removed. Is everyone okay with that? So, 500. So it will end up saying that subject the owner to an administration fee of $500. And it looks like, because it's underlined, is that the part they added. Yeah, and so that, that part was added.
My next question is, this money is going to be, going to the tow fund, correct?
Correct.
Do we, and I've asked this question before, do we have a tow fund at the present? Do we have money in the tow fund right now?
No, because that's the third ordinance. The ordinance has gotten passed.
What about prior to 2016? There was cars towed prior to today. Where did that money go?
To the general fund.
Mr. Mayor, we established the tow fund years ago, went back, the head was, um...
Did you pass?
Police chief, yes, we did.
You passed an ordinance?
Yes, we did.
Show me the ordinance.
Oh, really? Then you, the same person that went out there to go get whatever they had to get for you could go out there and get that ordinance and bring it back in here for you. Because there is an ordinance that states tow fund, because that person, the police chief at the time, used that tow fund to purchase those cars. You were on the board then, when that happened. They used that money to purchase the cars that the last time we purchased cars for the police department. It was told to them that they needed to go out there and then put X amount of money in the tow fund, and then they can have their cars. They went and did it. That money went, okay, so what you're saying...
We're talking about two different things.
It's the tow fund.
We're talking about...
It's the tow fund.
And that's the next ordinance we're talking about.
I'm, I'm, I'm asking you now, in this ordinance that says the money's going into the tow fund. I'm asking now, is, where is the tow, do we have a tow fund? You said no.
We have a tow fund, but we don't have an account to put the money...
I didn't ask about that account, man. I asked about the tow fund. Is there a tow fund? And you said no. So where this money that these residents were putting in to pay to get their car off for whatever violation that they had, where did that money go?
To the general fund.
But it's designated tow fund, it had a special line item for tow funds. Mr. Mohan was, was, was there back when we did this. And that money went there for that reason. Just like the drug seizure money went in a special fund for a reason. So it wouldn't get gobbled up in the tow fund, I mean, gobbled up in the general fund. But you keep saying right, but I said...
Any other questions on this ordinance? We're going to talk about the next ordinance in a minute. Any other questions in this ordinance? Trustee takes.
Just for the board, in the existing documentation for the village, there's a section that talks about towing. And in that section, talks, speaks of towing, there, there are dollar amounts for specific infractions. So it doesn't say less than $500. It says $125 if you did A, $200 if you did B. It's more specific, and it lets you know, or the person know, that if they engaged in those type of activities, what the approximate money would be for them to get their car back. This is just a catch-all, as you see it now. What's currently in existence, because you have not voted on all of this stuff, is a specific listing of fines that you can receive if you violate the ordinance. So that's just answering your question. There is something that, that's in existence that's more specific than this catch-all that you're looking at now. Thank you.
Trustee, go ahead.
To add on to that, that's what I was going to comment before, is I think that maybe that's what this wording was supposed to be, the $500 initial fee, but it also deals with the infraction, but as trustee takes stated, that's not in here. So to say not less than $500 is true. You know you're going to at least pay $500 for your car for the common, but depending on the infraction, you're going to pay more. And I don't know if it's possible, I mean, I'm sure it's possible, because of this computer, to add that list in there and put, it's going to be $125 additional for this, it's going to be whatever additional for that, so that people like trustee Burgess stated, when they go to get their car out, they'll know, I did this infraction, that's what the car would be, $200 on top of $500, so I should come back with $700. But that's not in here. Like you say, it's a catch-all, it's not less than. So that might be something to look into as well.
All right, any other questions?
All of that, excuse me, all of that money that's collected, it's all going to the tow fund?
Yep. Well, once this ordinance passes, it'll be a separate tow fund. That, what you're going to talk about next. All right? And so what we have in here is, the amendment, this one would be remove all the not less than under section two. So that would remove it from everyone from, from one to 12. All right? Okay, move to item, item number four. Item number four, ordinance amending section 74-192 of the Village Code. All right, this is the ordinance, talks about the collection. And talking about where the money goes, what the money can be used for. Any questions?
Is this a redundancy from the last ordinance? That's stated on page four of the last ordinance, it says all money goes to the tow fund. This one says all money goes to the tow fund. This ordinance that you, that you're introducing right now, ordinance number 74-192, states that all money goes to the tow fund. The last ordinance that we just got to discussing, 74-333 and 74-338, stated on the page five, that all money goes to the tow fund. So I'm just asking, is this a redundancy, or what is, what is the difference between? And one states of the different infractions. That was the one we just got to talking about.
Correct.
But this one here gives whatever, it gives a more reason for towing. I mean, but we already know that, because it spells it out in the other ordinance. The reasons, what'd you say, 12 of, for towing a vehicle. It, it spells it out there, so the reason for this tow, I'm sorry, for this particular ordinance is...
To be able to allow to set up an account, showing, and plus also talking about how all the money from the tow fund goes into this account, and how that, what those monies can be used from that account. So the first one, that's what we just got done talking about, was the reasons for impounding a car. This talks about the, the funds, once they're collected, because of this ordinance, are put into a separate account, and what those, those monies can be spent on.
It said that in the, in the last ordinance. It says that the, the money goes to the police tow fund to be used for the purpose of said fund, including but not limited to the police vehicle replacement or repairs, overtime paid for special unit deployments by the village police department, tools, equipment for the use by the department narcotics and gang units and miscellaneous expenses of the department. That's in this one. That's in this one. So they're both, they're both the same as far as at the very end. This one here says all collected money goes to the police tow fund. All money is collected by the police, I'm sorry, by the village pursuant to this section shall be deposited to the South Village Police Department Tow Fund to be used for the purpose of said funding, including but not limited to overtime paid for special unit deployments by the village police department, tools and equipment used by the department's narcotics and gang units and miscellaneous expenses of the department. They're the same. So I'm just wondering, what, what do we, you know, what, what's... We're going to have two ordinances that's going to say the same thing?
This is amending 74-192.
Okay, but it says the same thing? It does, no, okay.
Any other questions? All right, here you go, we'll go to public comment. A question in the comments was directed to the mayor. Each speaker will be given three minutes to comment on agenda items only. Each speaker will be allowed one opportunity to speak. I'll get you a mic here real quick. If you would, say your name for the record.
My name is Jan Clark, I live in South Village. Okay, I have no problem with number one. Number two, I have questions on. Mr. Mayor, may I have your attention placed, because we're talking with you. When you asked Mr. Mohan, go and get you some kind of document during discussion of item two, and you said, oh, this shows that we say 2,000 or 20,000 or 2 million or whatever it was, was that as of the end of the fiscal year 2015 or of the budget year? That's number one. Okay, and this would be to Mrs. Williams, Debbie. If you were the person in charge of keeping tabs on the budget, why don't you check and see if the budget is requesting for three or five new officers? Because not only the mayor, but with Burgess, Mr. Burgess, and possibly even Rosie, people were saying, well, I think, I think, and I know that before you wrote on this, you better figure out if you're talking about three or five, or five's going to slip in there real quick if it was three. So that may be possible to have a verification on that. And I also have my own comment about number two, that thinking that per time, police officers are going to be as dedicated as police is, as full-time. Item three, parking violated, parking monies, or item three, I understand according to what I hear verbally, but nothing in advance, which I did mention at the last meeting. People in the audience come to look at the, view the board, and they have no idea what's going on. But that's okay. Number three, my comment is, I think it's excessive for people in South Village to have to pay $500 in administrative fees. There's nothing to administrate. All you do is, is write on a piece of paper or put it in the computer that such and such VIN number has been put in lockup, or whatever you want to say. That's not administration. That's no work involved but 20 bucks, come on. Rethink this, please. We're talking about village residents. And if they're not village, village residents, they're still people. So I had to say, thank you.
All right, real quick, so we, we asked a question about the report I got. This, again, spells out the end of the fiscal year, so I can tell you exactly where the departments ended up. So that's why, that's how we knew, that's how we knew where the police department ended up.
For the budget year.
The, the end of last year's budget year. So that's how we knew where, where it ended. All right, the part-time officers, in fact, all part-time employees throughout the whole entire village were discussed during the budget. So it was made very clear, if you go back, you, you can listen to it, you can find out that there's a total of six part-timers that were brought onto the police department. One was, I can't remember, don't quote me on this, records, records clerk or whatever, but the other five was for police officers. So that was discussed during budgets. And it was very, it was spelled out in every department at multiple, at multiple meetings, because we had multiple meetings there, so. Ma'am, ma'am, you're out of order. Ma'am, you're out, you're out of order, okay? Thank you. All right, so the, the last thing we talked about was, yeah, it's called administration fee, but it is the towing fee. And it makes it very clear inside the ordinances that the administration fee is the towing, towing fee. That's where the money's going to. All right, next.
I have a couple of questions. Um, you're talking about hiring up the part-time officers, which will back up the full-time officers on the street, it may be. But then you say that they can also watch prisoners. So what happens if there's a prisoner and a full-time officer needs backup on the street? Next question is regarding the towing. So if you owe the village money for fines and you get pulled over for speeding, your car can or will be towed? And in regards to the, at least $500 that was brought up for that fee, is that going to be changed to $500? Or is it going to be determined by whoever picks a number out of a hat? And that's what they charge? You're talking about residents that don't have the money to pay a fee, but you want to slam them with a $500 fee on something else? Unless it's somebody that happens to know somebody or is liked by somebody, then maybe those fees can be reduced.
All right, now you talk about part-time police officers. Part-time police officers will be directed by the police chief. So having those officers where they need to be will be up to the department head. The towing of the vehicles, again, a lot of people are bringing up about this, this $500... $500, okay? The $500 fee has always been there. It was adding after, if you want to call them the criminal element, okay? This ordinance was very clear when it talks about intoxication. Those who are putting our residents in danger, it talks about drug, it talks about felons. You can go right down the line and look at the soliciting or possession of cannabis or controlled substance. So, you know, we talk about the, the person who's a law-like citizen, they shouldn't have to worry about this toll, this toll fee. Again, this ordinance was passed, I don't have it in front of me, but it was passed probably quite a few years ago, already at the board, and this is an amendment to it. And we removed the not less than, but the $500 is already there, it's already been there. So, all right? Next.
Judy Cast. I have questions on number two. On the part-time officers. You indicated that the part-time officers didn't have to do certain things because they're not going to be unionized. My question is, and all of you or most of you up there have worked a situation where you are union, and if they bring some non-union person in to do work that they didn't offer to you, you're gonna get paid for that even if you sit at home. Has anybody looked at the contract that our police officers have? And I'm almost certain that you have to offer the overtime to the full-time officers before giving it to a non-union person. Therefore, all your gibberish about saving overtime isn't going to fit in here. I also want to know what the urgency is in having a special meeting and then trying to pass things at the next meeting on the same night. The last time we went through this, we were lied to over and over and over. And I have an uncomfortable feeling about this one. And I have an uncomfortable feeling we will have a lot of lawsuits thrown at us. Number three. Number three, I, and I have to make a comment on what Rosie had to say. And yes, the people in the streets are talking about if I don't cut my grass, they can take my car. We, the people, do not get what you get up there. We get this, and this says impoundment of vehicle for ordinance violation. That in itself tells you what? Any ordinance violation, they could take my car? Did you tell us different? Did you put it out there for us? I came and read the agenda on the door and doesn't tell me anything, other than the fact that if I violate an ordinance, they're gonna take my car. Transparency still is not there. I agree with trustee Burgess when you ask about how much money? Did you say I'm up? Anyway, you're not telling the people enough.
All right. We asked a question about the contract. We have looked at the contract, so we looked at this again. A lot, a lot of this, this, you think they were bringing to the board or being added from other communities, to talk to other communities, especially like I meet with other mayors, J. W. meets other, other managers. Again, so when you look at, you know, what we're bringing to the board, this is something that other communities are already doing. Talk about overtime, you're right, overtime is not going to the part-time officers, and that's something that they're there to work overtime. The overtime goes to the full-time police officers. So I don't know if there was some misunderstanding there, but they're not going to get paid overtime through here. And then when you talk about the impound of vehicles, it makes it very clear in the title. Title talks about the impoundment of vehicles for traffic and vehicles. So these are, traffic says, says right on, on here, so. In fact, it also says under item number three, it makes it very clear, if you look at the second line, it says traffic and vehicles. So it is on that here. So. So we've got, let me see here. Yeah, so again, it's a traffic violation, and if you read through the ordinance, the ordinance is very clear, it's for traffic violations. All right? Next.
Kathy Benter, South Village President. I originally came up here because I, with a lot of these people, was under the impoundment scheme. It was a building. It was a building violation situation. As long as that is not the case, and you guys can guarantee that that is not the case, then we don't have a problem with that situation. But now as far as this $500 administration fee, wording behind that should be plus ordinance or fees, plus the fee that goes along with it. And that way you can tack on your 125 along with it, that I can book the charge unduly. Judy pretty much covered what I wanted to say, as long as we are not talking about building code violations. I want to ask something else, but I asked that.
All right. Thank you very much. And again, the ordinance makes it very clear, these are driving, moving violations. Every single one talks about either driving or while operating the, the use of a motor vehicle. So I think there might have been some misunderstanding out there, some misinformation, trying to incite the residents with false information. Any other questions? All right. Hearing none, we'll move to item number six. That asks for a motion to approve the ordinance amending the village code to add section 42-28, part-time police officers. Is there a motion to approve? Got a motion, is there a second? Got a motion, a second? Any questions or comments? Hearing none, vice clerk, please call roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Burgess?
No.
Jones?
No.
Myers?
No.
Tate?
No.
Samar?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number seven, motion to approve an ordinance amending section 74-333 and 74-338 of Division Two, impoundment of Article 11, impoundment of vehicles for ordinance violations of Chapter 74, traffic and vehicles of the village of South Village. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor.
Got a motion, a second for any questions?
Second.
Got a motion, a second? Any?
Question?
That's, I probably should have said, just so we all know, is that's the removing of the not less than from every single one under section two? I forgot to include that, sorry.
We need to take away our motion for seconds.
Sure.
I will remove my motion.
Hold on a second.
All right. So it would ask for a motion with the amendments that we talked about, removing all the not less than. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second? Any questions or comments?
Question.
Trustee.
As I stated before, I cannot go and vote on something that's not in writing. This is supposed to be removed, so until I see it in writing that it was removed, I will not vote on that.
All right, thank you trustee. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, vice clerk, please call roll.
Burgess?
No.
Jones?
No.
Myers?
Yes.
Tate?
No.
Washington?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Item eight, motion to approve an ordinance amending section 74-192 of the village code of the village of South Village. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Got a motion, is there a second? Got a motion, a second? Any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee.
Just to speak to what trustee Burgess said earlier, I just looked up the original ordinance on the website, and it doesn't say anything specifically as far as where the funds would go. So it's my understanding that that's what this ordinance is for.
Correct.
It's to flow in conjunction with the other ordinance that we just amended, but this says specifically that there will be actual line item, actual fund for it to go into, not just reading the word fund, but actually creating an actual place for it to go. That's really different, trustee.
And this ordinance was amended because of the trustee's asking for it during budget hours.
But he asked kind of why, because they did the same thing that I did.
Correct.
But a lot of time looking at an ordinance, and it doesn't say specifically in the current ordinance that we have.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Question.
Trustee Burgess.
Trustee Williams, you do not remember as a trustee that we had a toll fund?
I absolutely remember having multiple committee meetings and having that exact same discussion stating that this was going to go into the toll fund and that we were gonna be able, the police department was going to be able to use the toll fund for said purchases. But I also remember how this meeting with this board talked about where's the toll money? How public police department doesn't have access to it? Why is it going into the general fund? And this, this board is saying there needs to be something in writing that says the money that is collected by the police department for the toll fund gets to be able to stay in the police department for the toll fund. And I thought, but you trustee Burgess, I remember the conversations we had those many years ago. I remember the idea that this board had that many years ago, but there was nothing in writing, so because there was nothing in writing, when the money came in, it went to the general fund. This is the stopgap, as everybody on this board has asked for.
Mr. Mayor, can I direct a question to the finance director?
Sure.
Mr. Mohan, money that you got that has been coming in up until this point, that was designated for the toll fund, did it go into a separate fund earmarked toll fund?
No. It's directly to the general fund.
So even though it was earmarked toll fund, and it was earmarked, it was collected because of the toll fund, even back when Chief Levers was chief, that money went to the general fund? So how did you know how much to take out of it to buy the cars?
I have to go through the G L D T L, which lists the toll fund. And I have to move back.
How did you know how much you were supposed to take out of it never went? Because there was no, the money that was in the general fund, part of that was toll fund money.
The G L D T L can generate a report of toll fund, I can remove that much amount from toll fund and put it into separate toll fund.
And also, because this, this also leads to the same thing? Drug and seizure. Do we have a drug and seizure fund?
Yes.
Earmarked separately?
Yes.
Okay, because this is, also says that same thing that it's gonna go, so we had one, but I have the other. Okay, that's just one that they asked.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee.
Mayor.
I know several months ago, we discussed this, a very, very lengthy discussion, and Mr. Mohan says that it went to the general fund. And everybody out there, this entire board and half the world knows, this is a general fund, it's gone. They can use it whenever or however to pay bills, whatever. So I know several times trustee Burgess asked about, isn't there a fund? I asked about it, and I think every board member has, and we got the same answer. There's no ordinance on it. We discussed it, I know we discussed it. I have minutes that I wrote down, and I just don't write this stuff down for the heck of it. But this time, we do have a ordinance that says it will go into the toll fund, period. Now, is there any chance, Mr. Mayor, trusted, finance director, Mohan? Now, this is gonna go into toll fund. If whatever comes up, do you have the right to go with that toll fund and remove any money other than what it specified in the ordinance?
No.
Mohan? All right. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Vice clerk, please call roll.
Jones?
No.
Myers?
Yes.
Tate?
No.
Washington?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Burgess?
No.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. All right, with item number nine, Miss Landis, comments from Mayor and Board of Trustees. Trustee Williams? Trustee Burgess? Trustee Tate?
I just want to reiterate, excuse me, what I said earlier. We should come to a point in time where we stop lying to the residents. We need to build confidence that what we do is in the best interest of the residents. And that's by telling them the truth. All of this stuff that we going through, we said we're gonna have that discussion with the police chief and the mayor at a committee meeting. That's what we said, that's what I was taking. Did we do that? No, we did not. And now we voted and approved all of it. So let's lie to each other. We lie to you. Come on, lie to us. Because that's all we're doing. We are not building up confidence. And that's what we should be about, building up confidence in the relationship between this board and you as residents. And it doesn't matter if you agree with it or not, as long as we're open, as long as we tell you the truth. Disagree all you want to, but it's when we lie to you and make you think we're going right and we go left, that's when the problem comes in. So, to the board, congratulations, you've done it again. Thank you.
Trustee Johnson.
Nothing.
Trustee Washington.
First of all, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to say that I vote my own conscience, and I vote what I feel is best for the residents based on the discussion that we had. I don't need anybody to violate or to validate what I do or say, and I resent any statement that make it seems like I'm doing anything other than after talking to the residents, what I feel is in their best interest. So I don't need nobody to congratulate me on what I've been sworn to do, but we all have a right to make our own comments and our own sentiments public at these meetings, and I tried not to make mine, and I'm beginning to try to do that tonight.
Trustee Burgess.
Mr. Mayor, board, and I guess residents, but mainly the board, again, again, we're paying bills off the back of these residents. We raise rates, we do this, we need to find a way that we can work together to try to save money rather than increase rates, increase taxes. You, I, I'm sorry, but everyone here that's on this board lives in this village. Don't you see what's going on? Don't you see that we have less people than we had last year and this year? So what are we gonna do? We're gonna raise rates. We're gonna hire more people that we don't, are not able to afford to pay. We're gonna bring all that hope, that that magic wine will come over South Village and drop some money down. But in the meantime, we still have immediate checks, we still have to borrow from the water fund. I'm sorry, but I, I was here, I was put here as a trustee to watch the money. That's why I question. Thank goodness, and I mean this from the bottom of my heart, thank goodness, we don't have to get water from somewhere else, because as soon as we do that, we won't have a fund to pull from. Water department should have everything that they need to have, because they're helping this village survive. That's all I have.
Thank you trustee. Just lastly, tonight we saw three orders before the village board. These ordinances was not, first one was put additional police officers on the street with part-time officers. So again, for safety of the residents, this was very much needed. We saw the second one came across, talking about the, the impoundment of vehicles, and there's slight, some slight amendments in there. Again, for a person that's getting their, their vehicle impounded, it makes it very clear that it's from, everything from DUIs to intoxication, also from part of cannabis or drugs. So these are, if we want to call them, heneas crimes that puts our residents in danger. We don't want someone that's, that's under the influence or someone that's doing stuff like this to be going off and getting a ticket and driving that car away. So it's important that we impound that vehicle and keep our residents safe. And the last one that we saw before us tonight was an ordinance for the toll fund. We've heard much discussion about the toll fund, where the money was going. We know that for over the years, the village board has known it's been going to the general fund. Under the last budget, the village board asked for a special account for that money to go in, to be spent, and that last ordinance has voted out where it's going to go into a special, our special account, and what that, what those funds can be spent on. So again, it's three important ordinances. Again, tonight was called for a special meeting because I was not here last Tuesday night, and there was some questions that could not be answered, so that's why we're here tonight for a special meeting, so we can answer those questions. All right, with that said, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
So hold on a second.
Got a motion, a second? If I ever say aye?
Aye.
Special meeting is adjourned, okay? We'll move right into our village board meeting. Who but us?